Next item, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next item is approval of the meeting minutes from March 10th. Everyone's had a chance to review the minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Randy, please call the roll. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is special recognition, winter sports awards. I'll call on Mrs. Crawley.
Thank you. It gives me great pleasure tonight to be able to introduce our winter sports award students and their coaches. We have three students who qualified for the state tournaments this year in their respective sports, and one of those three actually placed the highest in Colrain High School history in his sport and division. So first, we would like to recognize our wrestling student athlete from Colrain High School. So Coach Wagers, can I have you come forward?
First, I'd like to say good evening to everyone. My name is James Wagers. I'm here for Colrain High School for wrestling. I'm very honored to be here for this evening to congratulate a very special, lucky, and honorable young man. It seems like just the other day we were talking about when he would be a senior, saying his farewells and moving on to the next chapter of his life. You know, it seemed like every coach in the country was in our room from probably sophomore year on. That was one of the good perks that I was able to take advantage of, was meeting all these high school coaches, Big Ten, ACC, SEC, all these guys coming in, crawling. You know, but I would actually sit and talk to this young man and ask him about his schools, what he thought, what he thought of the coaches, the environments, what his outlook would be. I knew one day the decision for him would come. I had an inkling for the past couple of years what his decision would be, even though in the background I was screaming, "Go Bucks!" I remember thinking that it would be hard to say goodbye, you know, from all the investments and everything put in, from all Colrain staff, the administration, the teachers, coaches. And I was right. It is hard. I consider myself, our team, our program extremely lucky to, and extremely fortunate to have met such a wonderful young man, a young man that we all care so much about. Because this young man is that special student athlete that we want representing Colrain in the Northwest local district. This is what makes saying goodbye even harder. So with this, I would like to bring this young man up here and introduce him, T. Gray Scales. I remember the first day I got to meet T. Gray, and to tell you the truth, I was kind of puzzled as what I was given as we're sitting in the room. He's real quiet, shy, young freshman, still trying to figure everything out, trying to figure the lay of the land and what's high school about, what's going on. And he didn't speak much. He didn't have too much to say. He just was one of those go with the flow kind of guys. Then he would do whatever he say, but he was still trying to learn. As time went on, you know, you could see he was starting to grow. And you could tell this because he would speak more. He would tell some jokes. He would crack up, and he would have comments. He'd have comebacks. And you would know he actually could speak. And there was things that were going on in his mind. By his junior year, he was a lot more vocal. He was in control. He knew the steps that needed to be taken in order to reach his goals. At this point, he was starting to lead his team, whether it would be on the field, in the wrestling room, or in the hallways. He led with confidence, knowledge, and at this point, experience. The beginning of this year, his senior year, he not only led with all of those attributes prior, he now led with determination, heart, and soul. He had everything applied to what his goals were, you know, in order to make them attainable. T. Gray ended up breaking every Colrain record we've ever had, and by leaps and bounds. Three-time state placer, Colrain's highest state placer, second place. Three-time GMC champ, two-time GMC wrestler of the year. Colrain's most wins in a season with 41, Colrain's career-winning record of 154. These are just a few. I don't want to keep going on and on because there are quite a few more we could add to this list. The most important characteristic that we can convey through what he has done and what he has learned throughout his career is that even though we were one second shy of attaining our ultimate goal, we still ended it, ended our career with class, pride, and dignity. This is the true meaning of being a leader, a wrestler, and a Colrain Cardinal. T. Gray's going to be greatly missed in the halls, on the field, in the room, on the mat. His presence cannot be replaced. Although he may be separated from us by time and distance in the interim, nothing will diminish the important role that he has played in all of our lives. As we say goodbye, we remind ourselves that farewells are not forever. They are not the end. They are simply words to say that we will miss you dearly and that we will remember you fondly. We at Colrain, and for Colrain Wrestling, we wish you happy adventures, fantastic new friendships, amazing experiences, and the journey of a lifetime.
T. Gray, where are you going to college, by the way?
New Year's Eve.
Good choice.
And T. Gray, would you like to stand and tell us who you brought with you this evening?
Yes. My father, Herman Sill.
How's it going?
Thank you. I will say, in my tenure, T. Gray has had the most recurring times up here in front of our beloved two awards. Congratulations to you. We also had two female bowlers who made it to state, one from Colrain High School and one from Northwest High School. So Coach Potsner from Colrain, if you would come up to recognize her student.
Hi, I'm Debbie Potsner. I'm the bowling coach at Colrain High School. I am not going to be able to follow Coach Wager's speech there. I have nothing written down, so I'm totally winging this. But Jenna's easy to wing it for. She's been an amazing bowler since day one when I got her as a freshman. She made varsity then, four-year varsity player, first team, all GMC, all four years. Just a dedicated bowler. She is, I couldn't even imagine how many games she has bowled in her lifetime. Way more than all of us, I'm sure. This year, she made the all-tournament team in every tournament, six tournaments that we bowled in. She broke the school record, again, every year she's broke the school record for her school, for the high average. This year, a 217, almost breaking the guys' average, 218. She almost had it. Which should have bowled a couple more games. And she broke the series high with a 506. Let's see, what else? So many, so many things. But she's been a pleasure to have on the team, team leader from day one. Just a great kid, and we've been co-champs, GMC co-champs, twice with Jenna on the team, being our leader. She was the GMC Bowler of the Year and the city co-bowler of the year this year. And I'm sure it's because of her I was the GMC Coach of the Year. So thank you. And I think that's all I have. So I'd like to have Jenna come on up.
I brought my mom, Gail Colrain, and my dad, Kevin Colrain, and I plan on going to college. I haven't decided yet. My dad's line's coming pretty close.
And now, last but not least, our bowler from Northwest High School, Coach Gooden. Hope you will come forward.
Good evening, everyone. Just like to let you know, it's an honor to be here. And it's not because of me that I'm here right now. Very young, special athlete, Lindsay Gellenbord. Came in as a freshman, had never bowled or touched a bowling ball in her life. Started bowling her freshman year after I convinced her in the JAMG honors class to say, "Hey, you know, we need some bowlers. You should come out and try." Sure enough, she convinced a few of her friends to come out, and that's pretty much how we work. A lot of the kids don't bowl prior to coming into Northwest. And she's such a special kid, and it's hard for me to have to say goodbye to her because she's been here for every single year that I've been a head coach. This is my fifth year as a head coach. And it's been an honor to have her on my team and to be able to say that I was able to coach her. She's such a special individual. At first, when I first met her, I thought she was quiet. Well, that soon changed. She eventually, probably about halfway through the year, decided that she was going to come out of her shell a little bit. And man, man could she talk. Now, it's been, it's been a crazy ride knowing that she's had to have a couple different coaches throughout her career. I kind of like oversee all of the coaching, but we had another head coach come in last year. He wasn't able to pursue this year because of, due to a job commitment. But she's done a great job being able to adapt to those types of things. As a sophomore, she was pretty much asked to step up and, you know, take the reins and do everything that she needed to do to be a leader, even though she didn't want to. We asked her, said, "You ready to be a leader?" And she said, "No, I don't want it." "Next year, you ready to be a ...?" "No, I don't want it." And I said, "Well, this is your last shot. You have to be the leader this year. There's no other choice." "Okay, I think I can do it." So sure enough, she stepped up to the plate. She bowled the fifth spot in Bakers every single year from her sophomore year on. And it was, it was amazing to see her grow over the years. And her senior year, she said, "You know, I want to learn how to hook the ball, too." So she developed that aspect of her game as well. And it's amazing to see somebody do such a great job from a point where she had never even done anything with the sport into where she's at now. I told her she could do anything she wanted to, as long as she had the opportunity to do so. And it's been a pleasure to be able to coach her. She's led us to, I think we're at 13 straight league titles, but she was part of those four. Three out of the four years, she won our conference tournament for us and came down to the last, last pram in a couple times, and she's clutch. And kudos to Jenna because I think they push each other. They know each other quite well, and they want to make each other better. And it's great to have that camaraderie and that, and that drive between competing schools, but sister schools as well. And it's been an honor to have her as part of our program. And she is the only bowler in Northwest history to be able to place a state team or individual. And it was amazing to see her be able to reach that point. And it's going to stink to lose her, but she can do anything she wants to in the future, and I will do anything for her that she needs. Like I said, it's been a pleasure, and good luck to Lindsay. Unfortunately, Lindsay couldn't be here. She has softball out at Wilmington tonight, so I guess I'll be accepting the blow.
At this time, if I could have our student athletes and their families and coaches in the hall, I'd like to take a photo.
We'll move on to our next part of the meeting, which is Northwest Notables. Yeah, those are attached in your documents there for you, and you also have a hard copy. And maybe Paul, I can go over them at the end of the meeting, if he comes back in. Okay, we'll move that to when Paul let us back in the room. Next item is report from employee organizations. Is there anyone to speak for the certificated and licensed employees? Seeing no one. Anyone to speak for the classified employees? Seeing no one. We will move on to report from school-related organizations. Seeing no one. Community comments. I've received free requests to speak at the meeting this evening, and I'll call on them in no particular order. The first would be Matt Keatsort, who would like to speak about district resident electronic devices policy. There's a red button. Just touch that microphone, and that red light will come on.
Hi, my name is Matt Keatsort. I'm a resident of the school district. I have four sons. One, they graduated two years ago, adopted twelve, and a junior at the high school right now, and eighth grader at Wythe Middle School, and a third grader at Wybeau. I wanted to speak on the electronic devices policy this evening. And they said electronics, such as iPods, MP3 players, earbud beats, et cetera, headphones, iPads, laptops, are a distraction to educational process and are not to be brought to school. If these are seen during a school day, they will be confiscated and returned to parents. So possession of these items may result in disciplinary actions. My question is, on this policy, I think the policy has been the same word that way for the past couple of years. But prior to this, this school year, my son, being a junior, when he was a sophomore and a freshman, the policy at Colrain High School, it was discretionary. The policy was in place, but it was discretionary to the teacher, if the teacher wanted to allow the students to utilize an electronic device in a learning capacity at the end of a class, if there was time permitted, for example, or during a study hall. And I was just wondering why the high school went back to a zero-tolerance policy. And I mean, I understand on some of these devices, you know, there's no place for it, like MP3 players and beats. You know, there might be a place, you know, if they wanted to listen to music, and it's not disruptive. But I say discretionary. They are high school students. I would think that having a policy in place where, you know, a time and a place for everything. And if they abuse it, there's a policy in place where there could be disciplinary action. But to not allow the students to be able to use electronic devices via PDAs, iPods, iPads, you know, some of the more studious students in a learning capacity at the high school level, I think it's just unfair. And I think there should be something in place where they should be able to do that. I know my son, the junior, he's been straight A's every year so far. And he said, you know, he's one of those that utilized his iPod to do research and so forth when he was a freshman and sophomore, but not this year. And he'll be a senior next year, and we'll be able to do it next year. But yet, the high school had, did all the construction, both high schools, computer labs and everything. You know, all the schools have Wi-Fi now and everything. Everything's going high-tech and electronics and everything. But then, there's a zero-tolerance policy on electronic devices. Be something addressed to that. And, you know, some kind of discretionary allowance for the teachers, you know, a time and a place. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Want me to respond to that? Yeah, if you have a comment, Dr. Jackson.
The policy has always been the same throughout the district. For some reason, there was some discrepancies between some of our schools a couple of years ago on how it was enforced. We did change the policy this year to allow students to keep it on them for emergency purposes, but not to have it out in the classroom. There's a couple of issues with it, and that's, it's the issues that we're currently considering. One is there's discipline issues when you have all these devices that are very easy to steal, and they're very small, and as you know, a iPhone, you know, a new iPhone is 600 bucks if you don't have the two-year plan or whatever. So they're very easy to stick in your pockets, so there's an issue there.
Right.
The second is also equity. So how do you require students to use a small device in the class when out of 25, well, maybe five of them don't have one? So there's an issue there, is what we're trying to figure out. In the meantime, we have increased the number of electronic devices that the district owns in both of our high schools. We've added a considerable amount of laptops with laptop carts at both high schools and labs as well. So we really feel like if a teacher needs to use access technology at the two high schools, particularly, the devices are there for them to use. But we still have to settle those other two issues on the disciplinary big piece of it, and also the equity piece of it, is how do you supply devices for students that don't have them? How do you require them to use them if some of them don't have them? So those are the two issues, but the policy has always been consistent, but they were not allowed. So I just wanted to clarify that piece.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's why, that's why I found out, because, I mean, I have the tracker from two years ago. And it says the same thing. And I was like, "Well, if it said the same thing, then why was Colrain allowing it to use?" But they went outside the lines and made that compromise.
I guess.
I can find answers to that, but I want to gather. I mean, nothing's going to change, because it says, you know, right here, the school was not responsible for lost or stolen electronic devices. Administrators will not investigate such occurrence, and I fully understand that. And yeah, I thought about the equity thing, equity thing, that cool. But it's not, you know, you're not requiring the students to use them. It's just some, some students like to use them to, you know, as aides at schools. And so I don't have an answer there either, but yeah.
I'll take your comments under advisement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Dexter Carpenter. Would like to speak about dress code and legal service. I guess we can take two topics. Go ahead.
First, I'll address the dress code. The last time I had a little tug-of-war about the dress code, and Mr. Heder pointed out that the reason the dress code was in Northwest High School because there was concern about gang apparel and safety issues where kids could hide guns in their clothing. Well, as you know, recently, we've had that concern at Colrain High School, which is not a concern. It really did exist, and with a gun. I just want to know now what would be the holdup for making the uniform process throughout the district? By the way, it's April, and I checked it. If we don't make the move, if we don't make the move in April, then we're out for the whole year and do it the whole throughout the district. If we don't do it now, we can't do it. So now that you've had a real threat, because Pam said that that wasn't true, it doesn't matter. I'm trusting you that if that's how you viewed the situation at the time, and now we have a real situation, a tangible situation, now I want to know, why can't we make the uniforms throughout the district before we actually do have a tragedy, sir?
Okay. Go ahead and give your comment on legal service, and then we'll...
And the other, my other question is, is that I know that we came down to picking that we're going to interview four, five legal services, and I just wanted to know. I didn't know how to filter this question, but did any of the legal services that we picked, did any of those legal services donate to any of your guys' campaign when you ran?
Not mine. Dan?
None of the legal services donated to my campaign either.
Yes, none.
I didn't accept any donations.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Can I respond?
Did you want to, Mr. Heder would like to make a comment on the dress code.
Mr. Carpenter, you're absolutely right. I think that, I don't know if it's the State Board of Education or the state law about the six-month grace period. I was going to bring it up later. You have to give, you can't like announce it tonight and Monday. My thoughts are, after we get community input, school input, that perhaps we look at the January 1st, because we're not going to make the end of August. But January 1st, I concur with you entirely. I feel that since Northwest High School has got the uniforms, the only thing I hear about Northwest is that school seems to be rising. And I, I think that what happened last week is a true sign that it's, the time has come.
Thank you, sir.
And Dexter, to clarify my response, I imagine you're talking about Finney and Hartman. I did not take any donations from Finney and Hartman.
Well, I just, being fair to everybody, I don't know, you're in behind, you're on four, five.
We have, I think that comes up later on the agenda tonight. We're going to discuss that. I think it's on toward the end of the agenda.
No, sir, you can check on that kind of stuff.
Oh, that's fine. Go ahead.
I do have a comment, I do have a comment about that, that the attorneys for the Coast people, who are Finney and Hartman, they did, Coast did donate to your...
The gentleman's name is Mark, and I cannot think of his last name. It might be Mark Miller.
I don't know. It just says Coast PAC. They donated to your...
That's not a law firm. In fact, Commissioner Finney's...
Those attorneys are affiliated with the Coast PAC. They were the attorneys for Coast. And the Coast PAC did donate money to your campaign.
Yes, there was, I took a $200 donation from the Coast PAC, which is not, which is not a law firm, which is why I'm clearing that up right now.
Yes, sir. But, but they are part of the whole picture, right, sir?
There's all kinds of people that donate to PACs and take donations from PACs.
But they're connected to the law firm.
I took, I also took a donation from a political action committee called Family First six years ago when I ran in 2007. All that stuff's available.
Yeah, but we're not giving those, we're not trying to give those guys a job in the district. That's why I'm asking, sir. You know, hey...
That's why I'm being completely clear about it.
I was scrapping for duck money, too, so if...
No, I actually wasn't scrapping for money. They insisted that I take it, and I said, "Fine." I am a low-tax person and...
But when I came up here, sir, I asked you...
If I took a donation from any law firms.
If indirectly or indirectly, some funds came for those...
I didn't hear it directly or indirectly, but that's why I wanted to clarify it before you left the podium, so...
You gave me the answer. He clarified, but that's cool. But if you...
Yes, I took a $200 donation from them.
Yes, I wanted to know, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker is Elaine Gack, and I guess this is a topic for a future agenda.
I guess this would be more for Andrew, but Common Core. If you're going to have any kind of program, explain that to everybody here. But it's a question's coming up. Please, they're placed out on the news and things. And we really need to find out what's Common Core really is and how it works. I know each state's different, how to do it differently. There's something we need to find out about. Is it a concern, how the teachers take and stuff like that? These are kids, this is one of these kids that will know how, what's going to happen to it. For like, these kids are starting out, graduating from high school. And we need to find out what it really does.
We've done several presentations, but we can do, have curriculum do a presentation on Common Core. I don't get a lot of questions about that.
Yeah, great, yeah.
We can do that.
Thank you.
And I've received one additional card from Rebecca Salt that wanted to speak about Colrain High School recent concerns. Okay, Rebecca? Do I have that name correct? Is the last name Salt?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I apologize for standing late. I'm here to express concern about the safety of the high school situation that we experienced in the last week. And to learn what plans are in place, and what plans are currently in place and what plans are going to be adopted to adjust to today's standard of safety. And not yesterday's standards of safety, but today's. It seems like we're living in a different society, a different world now. The days of when guns and mines were in the hands of police officers and... The days of when guns and knives were in the hands of police officers and hunters seem to be somewhat gone. Now both citizens and citizens' children have access to guns and knives, whether legally or illegally. Our world's changed, and we need to step out of the past, and I'm thinking we need to ask today, what do we need to do to adjust to today's issues, and not what it used to be like several years ago, or a year ago even? And I know that the board and the school district has been very proactive, and, you know, I have daughters in the school system, have been in our system since elementary school, and it's been, it's been great and it's wonderful, but society has changed, and I'm wondering if we have plans in place to adapt to those changes? As all you know, as you all know, we have to open up the school, or the newspapers, listen to the radio, hear of the last high school incident, which they haven't turned out too, too great recently. I'm just, I guess I'm concerned about our students at Corrine High School. I know that there have been a lot of plans made, and a lot of things in place that are, that we don't know about as parents, but I think that there may be some new things that we may need to consider. We had an incident where a gun was found on a student. What if that student had used the gun? How did the gun get in here? What are the possibilities of putting some things in place that would eliminate that from happening again or night? The money gang recently, I just learned this past week that there was a gang. I had no idea. I understand the students, that the student body could probably name everybody in that gang, yet I, as a parent, knew nothing about it. And I'm wondering, you know, how much we do know as adults, and how we can get more information from our students. I'm guessing that many of us in the room are parents, and, you know, if you don't have a child at a particular school or any school that really is having an issue like that, you may not be able to understand 100%, but if you have a child, you have a, or a daughter, son or daughter, and you had them in a situation that is a little bit safety-related and unnerving as a parent, you know, what, how would you want things to be handled stepping forward? The thoughts, the thoughts that have come to my mind, possible metal detectors where we get students come in, and, and again, it's a sad reflection of today's society. As a child, we would have never, we didn't even lock our windows, we didn't lock our doors, but today is different. Can we reduce the chances of something happening by having metal detectors at the doors where students pass through each and every time that coming into the building, or at least at the beginning of the day? Would that help? Oftentimes, you know, dark things happen in dark places. Darkness and light exposes darkness. And to reduce crime at night, law enforcement has increased lighting in neighborhoods that are affected by crime. And I'm just wondering how we can shed a light on the things that have happened at Corrine High School this past week, how we can empower our students to let us know as adults that these things are going on? Can we offer anonymous places where they can just drop evidence? Can we have assemblies where all the issues are addressed to every student in the high school that these types of things are not tolerated? And can the students be encouraged to speak up and just shedding light on this whole situation? I, I also am wondering if we could form a committee where parents and administrator and the board could work on maybe thinking about, or work on, you know, additional things we might be able to do, just to ensure the safety of our students, and maybe not just at Corrine High School, but this is the most recent incident, but maybe at all the high schools or middle schools, or wherever it's appropriate in the, in the district. And pretty much that is what I just wanted to say. Just concerned and wondering how we can address today's issues that involve higher tech, social media, gangs, and the threat of guns at night, it's real. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just make a few comments in response. We, we do currently have a crisis team or a safety committee that meets at a district level, and each building has one as well. We typically meet two to three times a year, and we work with local law enforcement. They're trained at a regional and national level, and they bring back best practices for school safety. And typically, every couple of years, we make some adjustments to either our plan or even our facilities. This past year, we added a buzz-in system and a fob system for every building. So it used to just be visitors, now all the teachers will have, all the doors will be locked, and then everyone will have to come in through a key fob. I did wanna respond to what happened last Thursday at Corrine High School, and I've kind of, I'm gonna read this, just because I think the biggest issue we had last Thursday was a miscommunication of what was going on. So I'm gonna go through this. It's, it's about a page and a half, and I'm gonna read it just so I make sure I get the information out that I wanna get out for everyone. There was a discipline matter at Corrine High School on Thursday, April, April 10th. 14 students were escorted to the office. They were suspended and recommended for expulsion due to specific violations of the Code of Conduct. Those violations were disruption of school activities, intimidation of students, intimidation of staff, demonstrations causing disruptions to school, use of cell phones on school property. No student was suspended for weapons, drugs, threats of violence, or any gang activity. Early in the morning on April 10th last Thursday, we escorted them to the office to begin their due process for discipline. Due to the large number of students in the office, teachers were asked to keep their students in the classroom except for emergency office referrals. Any office referral was sent to the Career Center. Also, due to the large number of students in the office, extra police were present to help monitor the situation. The police were never involved in the investigation or the various discipline matters. Once the first suspended student arrived home, he began to use social media to make comments about the discipline matter. Very quickly, his comments spread throughout the school, and many rumors were being perpetuated. Adding to this, students knew that something was different that day at school, and many assumed the worst. Students began texting their parents, claiming that the school was in lockdown, a group was threatening to come to school at lunch with guns, or that they simply did not feel safe. At approximately 11:30, we sent an email to parents explaining the situation. The, the letter was written in haste and was likely added to some of the confusion. Also, an Ohio Alerts message was sent to parents and students stating that there were no threats and no lockdown. By then, local media had picked up on the story, and it was too late to stop a large number of students being picked up or excused from school. And, and Mrs. Crowley and I worked with the media quite a bit, and for some reason, they just would not believe that there was nothing going on at the school. They just would not believe that. At the end of the day, at 3 o'clock, I met with the Corrine Township Police and Corrine High School Administration. I was able to verify through the police that they were ne- never able to substantiate any kind of threat made against social, or against Corrine High School students through social media or text messages. Whenever there was a rumor of a threat, they found that there was no substance to it when they investigated it. I also wanted to share some information from Chief Denny regarding the rumors of gang activity in Corrine Township. And he put it, I think, really well in an email, so I'm, I'm gonna read that, what he wrote to me, and forwarded to me. "As the chief of police and until January 8th, the criminal investigative commander, I review every police report that occurs in Corrine Township. There is not one single crime offense linked to gang activity in Corrine Township. Now, I'm aware there are a group of kids in the school who identify themselves as gang members, but the facts at my disposal do not support that claim. As a police officer for 21 years, I'm no stranger to kids who want their peers in community to think that they are tough gangsters. We made contact with the State of Ohio Gang Task Force on Tuesday, and they have had absolutely no information on the money gang. These people are the experts in monitoring real game ac- gang activity, and we have a close working relationship with them." With that said, in hindsight, we should have clearly communicated to the students and staff at about 9 o'clock in the morning, once all students had been suspended and were in the office, the situation, and updated them. The students at Corrine High School should not only be safe, but they should feel safe as well. It is my job to make sure that happens. On Thursday, the students at Corrine High School were always safe. They did not feel safe. I do apologize to the students and the staff and the parents for those anxious, nervous, and scared moments that occurred, and we have learned from that. But it's important to remember, it's most important to remember, that as a result of the discipline that happened at Corrine High School on Thursday, that Corrine High School is a more conducive place to learn. I also want to remind parents that any notification regarding a lockdown or potential threat will be sent through our Ohio Alerts texting system. That is the only reliable source of lockdown or safety-related messages from Northwest Local School District or Corrine High School. And we will use that whenever there's a lockdown situation. And then finally, I just wanna thank the very central office administrators, the Corrine High School administrators, staff, Corrine, the Corrine Township Police, for their assistance last Thursday. That was certainly a very long and stressful day for all of us. But I just do wanna reiterate that at no time were the students at Corrine High School unsafe on Thursday. It was just a simple miscommunication, but I, I do apologize for when they didn't feel safe and parents were anxious. And to get back to your questions about meeting, we, we currently do do that. I would suggest that you give Mrs. Paulette Crowley a call sometime, and she can kind of go through the process we use and how often we meet, and some other information regarding that. But we are always looking to make adjustments to that as needed. And, you know, the most recent incident in Pennsylvania is something that hasn't happened before, to my knowledge, so it's another thing we're gonna have to respond to and figure out how to prevent that from happening.
I think, oh, I'm sorry, if I could just, I think, I think as a parent, I think, I don't know if I can speak for everyone else, but I know that I just, we're just concerned about the safety of our, our children and our students, and, and I know that even though there's a threat, something could still happen, so that's where the concern comes, and I know you have many things in place, but appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That's all the requests to speak that I have, so we'll move on to the next item, which is legislative update by Mr. Harlow.
Thank you. This is my sixth board meeting, and this is the first one where I don't have to mention the word "snow," so I'm, I'm pretty happy about that, and I think all of you are too. So the Ohio Legislature finalized work on Tuesday, last week, on the capital appropriations, and they made, this being the number here, it was the capital budgets turn, and $369 million available for local infrastructure projects, 160 million, not for community projects, so that's a, that's a good, good opportunity. It's the first time in six years local projects were included in the capital measure. More to the point, in terms of policy, the House has passed the education mid-biennium review, which is a series of policy changes, and the latest version of the bill, which did pass the House, will also require 7th and 8th graders to be allowed to participate in career tech education requirements. It also delays requirements for career advising and dropout recovery waiver changes requirement and delays requirements for locally created criteria to identify at-risk students. Other provisions in 487 have to do with clarifying eligibility for Ed Choice scholarships, makes adjustments to the College Credit Plus program, and also clarifies report card measures about K3 literacy measures based on the total percentage of students identified, and the dual enrollment measures based on the percentage and not the number of dual enrollment students, and clarifies credit shown on students' college transcripts. So really, a lot of, a lot of housekeeping issues that'll be, once they pass this to Senate, which they will, and essentially that form will be interpreted and by, by the state and passed down to our local administrators. So that is pretty much my legislative update.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow. Our next item is the Butler Tech update. Mr. Detschel?
I was absent at our last Butler Tech meeting, but we have one tomorrow night, so next Monday I will have a report.
Any interesting topics on the agenda for tomorrow evening?
You know, there's a couple on the ROTC classes that we didn't discuss, so other than that, I don't know what else we got on there.
And if anybody wanted to attend that meeting, where do they, where do they go to attend it?
Yep.
6:30 at DeRussel Lee?
DeRussel Lee, yes.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Our next item is principal's report. Mrs. Dawes.
First, I wanted to thank you for inviting us to the meeting tonight. I'm Linda Dawes, I'm the principal at Welch Elementary, and Welch is preschool through third grade. This is our first year having third grade back. I have a few people with me that I wanted to introduce. First of all, Sharon Mason is our PTA president. Melissa Graves is our PTA treasurer, and these are my three helpers that are gonna help me tonight, Mitchell Graves, Jenna Mason, and Zach Mason. Tonight, we're gonna talk about supporting families as they contribute to the academic, emotional, and social, social success of their students.
I don't know if you can look at her. She has a clicker right there.
Oh. Okay.
Wait over there.
Point it toward this laptop. Point that clicker toward this laptop.
That would make sense now that you say that, yeah.
She'll move it for you.
There we go. Okay, I wanted to talk a little bit about the building blocks that we have in place to help families support their children through their academic career, and we really do take that as a real charge for us, because as we deal with our elementary children, many times those families, this is their first opportunity that they've had children in school, and so they also need to learn how to help at home, and what they can do to support their children at home. So, some of the things that we do have in place are teaching family strategies to support their child at home, providing families opportunities to come to school and learn how to help, providing homework that students can do and parents can assist in, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that later, but sometimes that's not as easy for parents as we think. And then communicate, communicate, and communicate. That is probably our top priority, is making sure that parents know what their students are learning and what they can do to help. Our goal is to help parents so that they can help their students to be successful. We hope to develop family habits of reading, working together at home, attending events at school, and setting high expectations for all. We all know that students are most successful when parents and schools work together. We truly do need each other. One of the programs that we have in place, this is definitely not a new program, I think Jenny Blessed taught this program many, many years ago. I don't even wanna count how many years ago the first time I taught this program was, but it's called Partners in Print. And Partners in Print is a wonderful program because it's all put together for you, and it's a how-to program for parents to help them know how they can support their students in the journey of learning to read. And many times, as adults, we forget how difficult learning to read really is. One of the things that I wanted to show you is a lesson that we do right away with parents. We all come in and we think, oh, reading, that's early to do. But that's an easy thing to do. Why are they not getting it, or, or what's going on? So we start right away with a program to show parents how this is easy, it's easy for us because we all know how to read, but for our young students, this is many times very foreign to them. So the book that I just pamped out to the board members is just an experience to show parents what it is to look at the material and look at what students see when they're first learning to read, and to see that, like, oh, my goodness, what does this say? first learning to read and to see that, like, oh, my goodness, what does this say? What we do is we show this book to parents, and it's all included. It really does not say much of anything. So then we talk about looking at pictures, taking a picture walk. What do you think might be happening by looking at the pictures? We talk about finding a word that's in common. Oh, I wonder what that word is. We see it on each page. So we go through this, and basically, this book, that, when you look at it, you really cannot decode. At the end, by the time we leave parents through lots of different ways of finding strategies to find what these words mean, is we finally do a translation for that story. The title of the book is Reading with Kaboodle, and if you look at page two, it says, "Please, said Kaboodle, will you read to me?" It goes through the whole book, but it's just a great experience for parents to see that there are many strategies that their children are learning and they're using as they begin that journey of reading. It's great that Scott prepared prepared lessons, posters, hands-on materials for parents to help them understand, and then our programs all started with, the kids would go with their family, and they would, or they would go with the teachers, and they would do something, but then, by then, when they came back, they would practice the strategies. I just pulled out a couple of the posters and wanted to ask them questions. What are the questions that you can ask as you lead them through learning their reading progress or process? And then just take activities and practices that they can do. This is an example of a packet that we then give to parents and families and say, "I know we just really overloaded you, but here's some things that you can use at home." Finding good books for a student, joining in, silent reading. Many times we'll say, "Go read in your room," but you really don't know what they're doing. Another one would be reading together. Sometimes that struggle to learn to read is so hard that it's so laborious when you are just a little one learning to read, that the best way to do it is for you to read a page and then they read a page. We try to plan a lot of different activities at our school for parents to come in, for kids to come back, they can show off their school, but we have lots of different things that we invite parents in. Just a few of them, I think these were all this year. Reading Under the Stars, Fall Into Reading, which is a, you know, isn't a fall, Fall Into Reading. A Dr. Seuss Night, a Jeopardy! Night, and we're going to tell you a little bit about some of these. A pumpkin carving night, where, you know, all our parents come and they carve pumpkins, but there's lots of collaboration between families when they do this. Polar Express, some are actually more fun than, you know, just give time together, not so much that we're teaching all the time. Welcome back to School Night, Critical Nights, our conferences. We're more and more getting our students to help with conferences. We have a lot of data folders going on, and so our students are being able to complete some of the conferences. We have an art show, and then we always ask parents and different family members to come join us for lunch. Sometimes that's just some fun things to do. Throughout the year, we try to make sure that we are actually providing materials that parents can use. In the beginning, I said, you know, we think, especially us who are, and teachers are alike, we think, oh, that's easy to do. Go find a book to read with your child. Well, when you have a child that maybe has a vocabulary at that point of kindergarten of fifteen, twenty words, that's not as easily done as we think all the time. So one of the things that we do is we provide a lot of work that goes home with students. Jenna's going to be my first helper. Jenna's going to tell you about a reading bag. One of the things that we do is we provide individualized homework for kids. They have a reading bag. The bag has a paper that tells their parent what they're supposed to be doing, and then asks for input, and how the parent felt that that book was for them. Was it too hard? Was it too easy? Was it, you know, on the topic that they liked? All of those things are so important. So Jenna, can you make your point?
Hi, my name is Jenna. This is a reading homework bag. I like choosing my own homework books. My mom signs the paper telling the teacher how I did on my homework at night. I love to read.
And one of the things that Jenna said is really important, the students actually choose their book to read, and we all know that it is at their level and it's something that they're interested in. The whole urge to do that reading and that homework just accelerates right there. Thank you, Jenna. Some of the other things that we put together to try to support our parents, this is a placemat that our Title I tutors put together. So it's a placemat you can put at your table, and all the site words are here on the table so that as you're eating with your family, find a word that starts with S, read that to me. Find a word that has TH in it, read that to me. So it just provides parents with the words right there that they can go over those. So then we're thinking, well, we really are working on oral reading fluency, so let's give them a lot of stories that are at their level. So this is all just different little stories that parents can have their child read to them. It gives them that extra little push on what they're doing, and it's also something that they can read, they can ask questions, and use those skills that we taught them when they come to school. So what else? One of the other things, oh, I think I missed one. I could never miss you. Mitchell's a third grader this year. Mitchell, would you, one of the things that we said before is that we had a Jeopardy! Night with third grade. So Mitchell, will you read about Jeopardy?
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Mitchell. This year, my dad and I went to Jeopardy! Night. It was a fun way to practice OA questions. It also showed our parents how hard OA questions could, can be.
And they really are, I think, Mitchell. And Zach is also a third grader. Wait, not yet. But it was really nice because the parents and the students were teams, so they went up, and we had the buzzer set up, and they had to buzz in, and so it was a team effort, and, yeah, hard questions, aren't they, Mitchell? Yes. So one of the next things that we really wanted to talk about is, though, communication, I think, so many times is the key element in getting people to work together. So we really work hard to make sure that we send newsletters home to every family. Now, some here, some teachers do them every other week, some do them monthly, some do them through email, some do them weekly, but a lot of our emails are really quite extensive. And the reason is, we want to make sure that parents know exactly what they're doing at school. We can't expect people to help us if we don't tell them what we're doing. So we have really come, we've got some pretty extensive newsletters. I was going to pass those down and show you. That's an example of a kindergarten, first, second, and third grade newsletter. They really came random. They started out, they said, well, make sure you give them a learning target, make sure you tell them what's going on. Well, then all of a sudden, it was like, ooh, these are the cool games. Let's tell them how to play this game. Well, now let's give them some websites. And of course, you know, we tell them what's going on at Welch and what they can do, there's a ton of work at Welch. So we really have felt that we worked to get that process of having parents know what they're doing so they can help us out to them, and we feel like that it is really being successful. This is just for the people that are back here. This is a first grade newsletter. It's copy back-to-back, and the teacher tells them what the learning targets are. She reminders, just little things, go on field trip, bring your money in, those kind of things, who the star of the week is that week, but then, it's a little fog, I'm sorry, I can't read it all, but lots of different things, ideas on what to do, some of the things that I said before. As we said, you know, we really believe that we need to communicate, communicate, communicate. One of the things that we put in place at Welch is that the first phone call that every parent should get should be a positive phone call. Parents need to know that we love their children and that we want what's best for them and we want to collaborate with them. So during the month of September, everybody gets a phone call, whether it's your child has the prettiest brown eyes, or the best smile, or, you won't believe what happened today, here's what they said when we asked this question, but we just try to make sure that our first contact is always something positive, and everyone wants to know how great their kid is. There's a lot of research on parents and schools working together, and, you know, just, you know, few things, when schools, families, and community groups work together to support learning, children tend to do better in school. They stay in school longer, and they like school more. And when we're dealing with our preschool to third graders, they better learn to like it because they've got a long way to go. They also earn higher grades, pass their classes and tests, they attend school regularly, and they know better social skills, better behavior, and adapt better in school. So right there, that is why we need to have our parents in school with us, helping us. This is Zach, and Zach's going to tell you about something that we, well, he's going to tell you about a summer packet. If you remember last year, the kids had 100 days off of school, 100 days without work that is really at their level for any parent is, they're probably at a loss. So Zach, can you tell them about that, and then we'll show them?
Hi, my, hi, my name is Zach. Hi, my name is Zach. This is last year's summer work packet. It helped me practice what I learned in the summer, so I was ready to begin third grade on the first day of school. You can win prizes if you turn in the finished pack of books.
Okay, thank you, Zach. This does look like a lot, but this was our summer packet that parents, that we sent home to all of our parents. Everyone received the packet. It's got, you know, work, it's got games, all different kinds of things that the kids could do to make sure that they were staying current on their skills. There really isn't time anymore to spend the first month of school practicing what they forgot over the summer. So that was our goal, to make sure that they did things throughout the summer, and just to encourage it, we then decided, okay, we need to have some prizes. So our teachers donated things, our PTA donated things, we got things from community stores that were nearby, and whether or not that's a prize, I don't know, but they could win prizes if they brought it back. Everybody did get something, but you couldn't win prizes. And we put them in the display case, and we looked at them for probably about two weeks at the end of the year, and they all knew what they wanted to win, just to kind of put that in their mind. That's what it feels like, bring it back. And we had many, many kids who brought that back. It was kind of cute. One little girl brought it back in December, or the parents were all gone at that point, but she wanted some prizes, so proud, and she went, I finished, and she was thrilled to that. So that's been a good program for us. Obviously, it's a little slower right now, and we're not going to be, have quite such a book like this. So basically, we just, we need each other. Together, we can help our students set the foundation for great things, and we need to just always keep our kids at, you know, at the forefront, and making sure that we're doing what we need to do for our kids. A lot of times, I'm helping their parents so that they know what to do. Parents want to help us, but we have to help them so that they can't help us.
Thank you, Linda. We've been able to look at these newsletters, and we've passed them down the line, and I do think that's the key to student improvement and student success, is keeping everyone involved, informed with what's going on.
Thank you. We really have found that parents really do support us when they know what we need help with, so thank you.
You guys got these.
I don't really think you want those books.
I can throw it online.
Oh, okay. Michael, did you? Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, thank you very much for an excellent presentation.
Nice job.
Thank you to our young students. Very much appreciated.
Mrs. Dolls, if I could have you and your students in the hall for a thorough?
And our next item will be financial reports of the treasurer. And I'll go directly to you, Treasurer Bertram.
Would you like a motion in a second, and then me to speak about them?
Do you have any comments about?
Yeah, well, the only comments, I'll piggyback on Mr. Eether from a month ago. Just spent a week up at the workshop talking economics, and our investment rate could be much better if you could get the Ohio General Assembly to allow me to invest for 10 years or more. Other than that, not much has changed.
Call the governor.
But we are starting to see a trend where interest rates are going up, and we may see a little better return on our investments in the near future.
What is the going rate now?
Again, if, there's some step bonds out there where I could take those out to five years, and if I hold them for five years, I may be able to get 2%, but they're calling them after three, six, nine months because the initial interest rates are higher than the current rates. But it at least gives me an opportunity to get a little higher rate than I normally would. So again, if I can get a target of one, I'm almost pleased, under current conditions, so.
And Treasurer and Superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the financial reports as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any other discussion on the reports? Hearing none, Randy, please call a roll. And the motion is approved, five to zero. Next item, certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations.
Yes, we have six certificated resignation and one procedural, I'm sorry, one tutor resignation. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Fran, I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for the district, and we'll miss you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, Randy, please call a roll. And the motion carries five to zero. Our next item, classified retirements and resignations. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have two classified resignations and four classified substitute resignations. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Grace, also, just want to thank you. I know you've been here many, many years, dedication, and I always see you at all the extra things, so thank you very much.
Is there any other comments? Hearing none, Randy, please call a roll. And the motion carries five to zero. Our next item is the approval of a new fund. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have a summer reading grant for Northwest High School. Randy, do you have any comments for this?
This was the grant for $1,000 that was mentioned at the last board meeting that Northwest High School had received.
The Treasurer and Superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the new fund as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Randy, please call a roll. And the motion carries five to zero. Our next item is bid resolution for summer permanent improvement.
Yes, we did a resolution at our last meeting, and we'll approve those contracts, but we have to do one more resolution to add a cosmetology lab for Northwest High School, which is going to be a new program that Butler Tech's offering. Our agreement with Butler Tech requires that we update the facilities as needed, but we're real excited about offering this for our students at both Corin High School and Northwest High School, but it will be housed at Northwest High School. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the bid resolution for summer permanent improvement projects as listed.
So moved. Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Randy, please call a roll. And the motion carries five to zero. Our next item is summer permanent improvement project contracts.
I'm going to call on Mr. Bowling to describe what our list here is for the summer of 2014.
Hi, we've put out for bid at our last board meeting bids for several summer improvement, which include Northwest High School window replacement, our gym floor replacement at Corin High School, bleacher replacement at Corin High School, Northwest High School roof replacement, unit ventilator replacement at Corin- High School roof replacement, unit ventilator replacement at Colerane High School, and auditorium renovations. All the bids have been turned in, they have been checked and double-checked. The one bid we are going to remove is the auditoriums because we want to make sure with all the unique aspects, the sound, the seating, stage floor, the curtains, and everything else, that everything is exactly to the specifications we wanted. We had committees at both schools to pick out specific things. The specs were written specifically. So, we want to go back and double-check that the auditorium is meeting all of those specs that we put for them. And we're not comfortable doing that right now. So, we're going to pull the auditorium from the list, but all of the other have checked out. Went to the auditor's website, there them all there, and then SHP has done background checks on all of them. So, I would like to split them for approval.
In addition to what you have as the attachments, the letter from SHP with the low bid, and you also have the bid tabs, and the auditorium renovation, the low bid was by $12. So, it's several hundred thousand dollars, and the low bid was by $12. So, we need to make sure that it's exactly what we want. So, we are going to pull that in. We should have it for next Monday to approve. So, the Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the summer PI 2014 project contracts as listed, with the exception of the high school auditorium renovations.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any comments or questions?
I don't know that.
That's out of order.
I think. Do you know this, ma'am?
No.
There's a...
Yeah, but we just can't have people...
There's an opportunity to talk about that. We do take questions from the audience, so we'll do it at that point. That's just for the board to discuss. So, the motion's been moved and seconded. Was there any discussion from the board? Hearing none, Randy, please call the roll. Motion carries five to zero, and there will be an opportunity to speak to it later in the agenda. Next item is a resolution to declare students impractical to transport.
This is our annual list of non-public students who we transport, and instead of transporting, we pay the parents per state law. So, it's about a list of over 250 total in the list. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution to declare students impractical to transport as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Randy, please call the roll. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is the approval of dual-credit supplemental job description and memorandum of understanding with the association.
At the last meeting, we presented a new program that we're going to offer for our Colerane High School and Northwest High School students, where they will receive University of Cincinnati transcripted credits at a reduced rate, and our teacher will teach it. So, we have two items that we need approval. One, we need a job description approved, and then we need the MOU approved to pay the teachers for the additional work. They will be paid somewhere between $456 and $761 per course, according to their experience, similar to what we do with our AP courses. So, the Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved. Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, Randy, please call the roll. Call for a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is certificated licensed personnel items.
Yes, we have 19 administrative contracts that are being renewed for two years. We have six administrative contracts that are being renewed for one year. We have one volunteer coach, and we have a resolution to hire nonlicensed coaches in several areas. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Randy, please call for a vote. And the motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a classified personnel items.
Yes, again, we have additional administrative contracts here. We have four classified administrative contracts being renewed for two years. We have two classified administrative contracts being renewed for one year, and we have four classified substitutes. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Randy, please call for a vote. And the motion carries five to zero. Our next item is an extended field trip request. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have 10 members from Northwest High School Student Senate that will be attending the state conference. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the extended field trip item as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just hope that we could get a group of them to be able to come back and present to the board, so they can tell us how the conference went. And a much deserved, Patty Daley will be receiving that leadership award, and she has done this for many, many, many years, and she's done a great job with the Senate, so, very, very deserving reward.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Randy, please call for a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is resolution adopting Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan for the current school year. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, more commonly known as Blizzard Bags, is the way everyone's calling them. So, if the board approves this resolution, what will happen is we will extend our school day. We have three days to make up. We've missed a total of eight school days, and we get five that we don't have to make up. The state legislature was arguing back and forth about allowing us additional days, but ultimately, what got passed is we have to make up four days before they give us additional Calamity Days. So, we have three days to make up, and we've put this on the website, we've communicated this pending board approval, that we will make up our first two days on June 12th and 13th as our calendar states. The third day was supposed to be on June 16th, but that interferes with some summer school programming that we need to get started right away for our OGT students that still need to take it over the summer to pass their graduation test. So, what we're going to do is this resolution approves the use of what's called a Blizzard Bag, and its assignments that will go home with students. They'll have approximately two weeks to complete it, and that work will be brought back, will be graded, and will be noted in the gradebook as a day of attendance, and that will be our third day that we have to make up. The information will go home this Thursday, April 17th, with our students. They will have until May 2nd to turn it in, and then our last day of school will be on June 13th. The teachers at the end of the year have to work two hours of record-keeping or checkout, so they'll have the option of either working an extra hour on the 12th and 13th, or coming in on the 16th for those two hours at the end of the year. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan Resolution as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Andrew, this is something that I've heard quite a few of the districts are doing, correct?
Yes, and several districts are doing this. This will be the last year that we have to do anything like this because next year, it switches from days to hours. So, there's a minimum number of hours you have to be in school, and we're well over the minimum. They can't reduce the number of days next year to less than the number of days we're attending this year. But if we have an issue next year, we have additional hours that we could miss as many as 15, 16 days and not have to make them up if we didn't, chose not to. So, this is the last year we anticipate needing to do Blizzard Bags.
I just want to say, I think it's really, it's really a good, for the state of Ohio, to give us the flexibility for this. It's something that northern states have had for a while, and about three years ago or so, a state senator from the Cleveland area really got it. Obviously, they have a lot more snow days on me. Years like we had are pretty typical up there, so they were pretty glad to get that along. Never thought I'd see that we'd have to take advantage of it down here, but here we are.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Randy, please call for a vote. And the motion carries five to zero. Our next item is legal services discussion.
Right, so this is an item for information, and the board needs to direct me in terms of how we want to proceed with this. We posted online and distributed our RFP for legal services. We received proposals back from Ennis Robertson Fisher, Ricker and Eckler, Taft, Schroder, Mandrell, Barberio, and Powers, and Finney Law. So, we received proposals from five different firms. We have two options on how to proceed. One would be for two board members to be on a committee with myself and a few AO administrators, central office administrators who use the attorneys, to come back to the board with a recommendation. The other option, if all five board members want to participate, would have to be done in a public... It could just be a committee also, so the board needs to direct me on how they want to proceed with this. I think we'd be better to have all five board members participate because it's an issue that's caused some contention in the past and make it a public session. I don't know what the other board members think.
I think we should have a committee, because, Dan, because I think this, one of these law firms, it's a conflict of interest because they donated money to your campaign, the Coast People, and Mr. Finney and Mr. Hartman are lawyers for them. And you guys tried to come in here and appoint them as attorneys for our district without going through anything like this, and now here they are, they're on this list.
And you don't think we should have a public session with five of us where the public could attend?
I don't think we ever have done that before.
I say if we do that, I mean, I think it's absurd, but if we do that, we keep it on a Monday night, we keep it on a regular board meeting night, and we do it, you know, before the meeting or whatever. But I will go ahead and say, I hesitate a little bit about a committee, because for all of you that were at our last couple of board meetings, we were supposedly supposed to have a committee for the architect firm, and that's what you as the public were told, and then a phone call gets called where the decision's been made by the president to call a meeting and totally change what we're doing, and now we're interviewing, we're interviewing the architects on Wednesday. Gosh, I hope all of you can be there, and I'm not even sure if you're going to be told about it. So, I hesitate to say a committee because I'm afraid that, because you're the president and you love to say what you can do, that we decide something here, who's to say we go out the door and tomorrow you call Dr. Jackson and say, "Well, board policy says I can call a meeting whenever I want, and we're going to do it this way and totally change the way we're doing it." So, maybe we should just say, "Dan, how do you want to do it?" Because that seems the way things are rolling around here.
Thank you, Pam. I consider your comments to be quite ludicrous.
Really? Because you never called and asked for me and talked to me, and I was on the committee.
Have you ever let anybody finish speaking?
Actually, you didn't let me. I wasn't done.
You sound like, go ahead and say what else you have to say.
Like I said, you did not call and make a phone call and talk to me. I was the committee member.
Pam, Mrs. Detschel, last Thursday, as you've seen, Andrew has sent out a email to get the committee back together. And when we met last Thursday, I asked Andrew, "Hey, I noticed that Mr. Shaw, who the board, and a, there was some consternation last week, but three of the board members favored inviting this Colerane High School parent who happens to be the owner's rep for Cincinnati Public Schools, and he received all those school buildings and went through all the punch list items, and we didn't want to turn down that talent, so we had asked Mr. Shaw to be a part of that committee." Dr. Jackson had sent out an email to get us together to review the last four, and I questioned Dr. Jackson, and I said, "Dr. Jackson, why isn't Mr. Shaw copied on the email?" And Dr. Jackson said, "Well, Dan, I think we're really at the point where the board needs to decide which architectural firm we're going to use." So, that's how it evolved into, "You know what? I'm not going to disenfranchise Jim and Chris and Michael, so we're going to go ahead and have the five of us do it."
So, you made...
Because, well, no, the decision was made, not by me, to pull Mr. Shaw off the committee, and the board favored having him on the committee, if you recall from our March 10th meeting. And at the time, you said, "Why don't we ask everybody in the community to be on it?" And no, the board talked about it, and Mr. Harlow and Mr. Heeter and myself said, "Why would you want to turn down this expertise? A guy that's been with CPS for 10 years and the giant building program that any of us that live here in Cincinnati are aware of, where they've redone just about every building, why would we want to turn down that talent?" So, when he was taken off the committee by Dr. Jackson, or was not copied on the email, and he wasn't going to be a part of the decision of the four, and frankly, he knows a lot more than any of us do about this topic. And he's a, you know, Colerane High School parent, this is somebody from the outside, and so I thought, "Let's just have a meeting with all five of us so we can all five participate. Let's make it a public meeting, so if somebody wants to be there and hear what's going on, let's do it that way." Did any of the other board members have a comment?
Yeah, I do. First thing, Dan, regarding it, I would move it to a bigger venue, so we have the community that can come. Small room, we know what can happen when things get heated. We can think back to...
We don't have enough seating tonight anyway for the group that's here tonight.
Second thing is, I would have a part of that discussion where the public can ask questions in writing through the treasurer or the superintendent, but I don't want, or I personally don't want to see this become a shouting match. And I can also say that in my two prior terms on the board, at one point, it was sort of four to one, and then it was three to two. And I don't ever remember showing any confrontation with the person who was the board president. I just realized to typically had the majority and kept my mouth shut. I don't remember, you know, screaming and challenging the president and insulting him. So, for what that's worth, I think it's beneath the district school board to have the petty arguing over who's president and who's doing what, and who's got a conflict of interest over somebody of a group years ago giving a donation. I just find it very petty.
Jim or Michael, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's ridiculous, Chris. This guy's group donated to Dan's campaign, and you guys came in here wanting to give this guy the job. "Hey, my buddy, he donated, I'm the school board president now. Come on in, you're going to be the lawyer." You know, our superintendent met with this guy for an hour and a half, and our superintendent, who works with the attorneys, maybe on an every-other-day basis, or somebody in our district does on a daily basis, says he would not hire this guy. Would not hire him. And you still want to give this guy a shot at being our attorney for our district. When our superintendent met with him, are you going to let him meet for an hour and a half with the other four firms? You made him interview with Mr. Hartman. Now, are you going to do that for these other four? I mean, if you don't, that's showing favoritism to me.
To answer that, at the time, Jim, our policy, which the board, the majority of the board instituted in 2009, when, on a four-to-one vote, and I wanted to have all these things go out the bid, the policy that was passed in 2008, or it was 2009, in March of 2009, I believe, was that HVAC, plumbing, electrical, legal services, none of that had to go out the bid. As a result of our discussions on January 27th, the board, on a five-to-o vote, went ahead and changed the policy to put all those items out the bid. So, I felt like we made a little bit of progress in our last of January and our first February meeting, where now these items go out the bid. So, following the Superintendent's recommendation, we did put out an RFP, and as Dr. Jackson said, we've had five different firms respond. As far as donations from Coast, Coast has its own separate political action committee.
And these guys are lawyers.
What they stand for is not raising taxes above the level of inflation. They have done things recently, you know, they oppose the construction of the streetcar project. They're not somebody that's unique to school districts. And, you know, if I give money to my church, or the Right to Life, or any other organization, that doesn't mean the Northwest School District supports that. That's an individual giving money to somebody. The check that I got was from the Political Action Committee, which is set up to make donations to people that they, that favor their way of thinking.
What do these guys represent? And you want to give them a job without going through the process. We just went through this process a year ago. We put an RFP out for our legal services. We did this one year ago.
And who responded?
I don't know. There was three or four firms that applied.
We had three firms.
And these were?
Ennis Robertson Fisher, Ricker and Eckler, and there was an individual...
Our department, we hired all three of them, I believe.
And Dan, am I allowed to talk again? Because apparently, I'm being misconstrued if I speak. I apologize if I'm lying, if I'm shouting. I don't think I'm shouting. I think I can question this. I think that eight or nine or 10,000 people that over the last 16 years that keeps voting for me doesn't want me to just sit here and keep my mouth shut because I'm not board president. I mean, I think I have a right to ask the questions. The thing is, is the way that it was done, is that we came into a meeting and you pretty much pushed it on the superintendent and made a meeting with this guy, this Finney guy-
No.
Or, I'm sorry, Kurt Hartman. You made that, you set that up with Andrew, then how are you going to be fair? I think, Jim, has a valid question. Why then didn't you do that to the other firms, these other firms? Why don't they get a one-on-one with the superintendent? And over the years that you've been on the board, I think we can go back, you have abstained on votes on much less reason than this. But this, you're, I mean, it does appear that you're kind of ramrodding this guy through. So, I mean, I, you know, I just don't understand. And as far as the other thing with the architect, that's fine that that man was on there and he gave his input and so on and so forth, but what I'm saying is, you tell the public, and we make a decision here as a board on a Monday night, we're all giving up our Monday nights to be here tonight. And so we discuss this, and then sometime between that board meeting, you don't like how the CEO of this company that we've put in charge, you don't like how he's doing something, you want this man still a part of it, so you call a meeting and you totally change the process without having a board meeting and asking the other five people. Quite honestly, all the things over the years that you've used your little catchphrases as far as being transparent and so on and so forth, this board is the least transparent since January because of these things you're doing in the back hallways. I mean, I don't understand. I don't understand why we just didn't do it the same way. Or if you did have concerns, why couldn't you have waited to a scheduled board meeting, which is tonight, and we have one next Monday? Why couldn't you have waited and in public session in front of the people we represent, you share your concerns that, you know, you have a problem with, you disagree with Andrew that this man should still be a part of this, and then we have our discussion, and then we vote on it, and then we go from there. And if the vote comes down then, and it's all above board, and it's in public session, and it's a three-two or whatever vote that, okay, we're going to do this with the architects, then we do it. It's the way you did it, not in public session, and you just took it upon yourself to change the whole way we did it. And that's what I have a problem with.
Pam, I just address that. Dan, at the time, had been board president for a week. I mean-
This was just the last couple, no, 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 this just happened, Chris.
Oh, with the architects.
No, with the architect, Chris. No, I'm just talking with the architect. I was on the committee, and I apologize that because of a family emergency, I wasn't able to be at that one, but the fact that everything gets changed and not in public session, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that what we're doing on Wednesday won't be fine. I'm just saying, instead of him making the decision and doing that and calling a couple of people and saying, this is what we're doing, we didn't get asked, we got told, this is what we're doing, why could we not wait till tonight and do it all above board? That's all I'm asking.
I'd like to just draw out another thing, if I can revert back to the attorney. People know that there's, you know, we're getting the inference there's some sort of cronyism. My brother's an attorney, I've told you that. He gets a call, I'm not going to say from who, it's not important, but somebody who's in the running, who's an attorney that he has done business with, and they wanted him to contact me to put pressure on the other board members to select their firm. That's, and I was thinking, if it's like that on the school board level, what is it like on the state and federal levels? And, you know, with people trying to use their connections, I just, and he said, no, absolutely not. And my brother's a very honorable man, and he would not have done it for any, anything. He didn't, and I just found out about it. But that's how everybody tries to get a way into, maybe having their resume put at the top of the stack. So it's very common, and I don't view it as cronyism, I just view it as a guy who knew somebody who knew somebody.
Michael, have you, have you any comments?
I just, I do want to begin just with one, one thing. Upon reflection, I should have brought this up, I do apologize to you, Mr. Carpenter. I received a campaign donation from the campaign fund of an individual who is actually an attorney for one of the other, that would be Taffet, Houston, Hollister, Senator Bill Sykes, donated to my campaign, but he donated from a senate campaign fund, so that was something I thought about later, like, yeah, maybe I should bring that up. So I just want to put that out there. As far as, as far as what we're doing here, I just, I want to go with, go with the, have all five, have all five board members discuss it. I mean, that's, that's the, that's the way I feel. I mean, if we do it a regular meeting or a separate meeting, you know, I guess I'll, I'll leave that to others, but by and large, I think the five of us should weigh in on it.
You know, Michael, that's fine that all five of us weigh in on it, but these guys that you wanted as our attorneys, they don't know school law. Our superintendent, I'm going to say it again, an hour and a half talking to this guy, he doesn't know school law. The superintendent said he wouldn't use him. Why would you want to put our district in peril by using an attorney that knows nothing about school law? Why would we even interview this guy?
Jim, I think it might be-
I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, I said it before, you're not going to have your dermatologist do your heart surgery, are you? I don't think so. Why would you have a guy that doesn't know school law, has never done anything with school law, be our attorney? I just, I don't, I don't understand your guys' thinking. You know, these guys may be very nice, they may be good litigators, but they don't do school law. They just, they don't. And I just don't see why you would hire these guys or want to have them, even waste our time interviewing them if our superintendent's already done it for an hour and a half, and he said they don't know school law. I just don't understand why you would give them a chance to be interviewed when it's not even, I don't know, I don't know what else to say to you guys on this.
I just want to hear from them in an open meeting. And everybody else.
I'd like to do it in an open meeting, too.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
I don't know, is there any more discussion?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to hear what the community thinks.
Well, there's an opportunity for that coming up when we take comments from the community. I would like to ask another question, Jim, since you've brought it up, that I took a $200 donation from the, from the Coast Political Action Committee. Does a vendor donating to a campaign or an issue that involves a school exclude them from being involved in doing business with the school?
You mean like a levy committee?
Well, levy committee that you're the treasurer of, with Steve Hammond and Paul donating thousands and thousands of dollars to the levy committee, which is fine, that's their prerogative.
Yeah.
But do you think that maybe you or your spouse should have abstained from voting on any of those issues?
No, I don't.
If that's the case, we wouldn't be voting for half these, because what you guys don't seem to understand, anybody that works with public schools are there to support public schools. They don't work against school levies. So you have banks, you have, you have all kinds of vendors that work together as a community, because the way it should be is a community should all work together to support their public schools. So there's a lot of vendors, a lot of people that we use that helped with the levy campaign, and if that's really what it comes down to, that you're ticked off, that God forbid, somebody helped the levy pass, and God forbid, we're going to get anybody that does business with this school that helped with the levy campaign, we're going to get them out of here, and we're going to just put somebody in that doesn't know what they're doing. I mean, that, that, that's crazy. And to answer your question, absolutely not. I don't think if, if a vendor helps out with the levy campaign, and because the only reason I'm sitting here is because I care about the kids and the public education, and I'm going to work my butt off to get every levy passed that we can get passed, that we need to get passed, I'm not going to apologize for that. I mean, that, that's crazy. I mean, we are here to educate kids, and unfortunately, that takes money. And unfortunately, the people up in Columbus don't seem to get it to fund us properly, so it's all put back on us locally. So guess what? We have to work our butts off every two or four years and try to work on getting levies passed and educate our community of why our property taxes have to go up again so that we can support our kids, so that every single kid in this district, everyone, regardless of what side of Corrine Avenue they live on, regardless of what high school they go to, they all deserve the best education possible. So we work to get these levies passed so that we have money to do it. So if these vendors want to support our levy, intentions that you're going to say something because Jim or I work on the levy campaign, shouldn't the board members that are up here, shouldn't they be the ones that want the levies to pass? Shouldn't they be the ones that work hard because they want public education? So, you know, I don't understand it. I know you don't want levies to pass, but sorry, I mean, I don't think, you go through, you better check and see everybody else that's donated to the levy campaign, and thank goodness they do.
About a half an hour ago, I voted positively to allow Steve Hammond and Paul to do our summer projects, and they get a fee for that, so I have, I have no problem with it. I was merely asking if it's right that you or your spouse should continue to vote on those issues when Jim's name is actually signed on the campaign finance report.
For the levy campaign.
I'm the assistant treasurer, by the way.
Yeah, for the levy campaign.
And just as a point of reference, you know, the average donation to most of the levy campaigns are 10, 20, $50. It was my understanding that the architect gave $10,000.
That was 20 years ago.
What architect?
Yeah, really? We know that.
Nobody gave, nobody gave no $10,000.
I saw one where they gave $10,000.
Not the recent, not the most recent, this is-
I don't know what question.
1997?
Yes.
When are you talking?
Jim, I don't know, I just saw it printed, but I'm just saying, they, they don't have an office in the Northwest.
Regardless, Chris.
The seven years that I've been the treasurer, we haven't gotten a $10,000 donation. I wish we would. If you had 10 grand, come on, bring it on. We'll all deposit it in our account.
The, but at the same time, I would like to think that these other architects have a shot at getting our work, and they've been pretty much shut out for the last 20 years, and because, you know, Mr. Green forgot to show up, is what it is. They forgot to donate, so, you know, these other companies haven't had a chance, and like I said, I just voted half an hour ago to support Steve Hammond and Paul with our summer projects. I just think some of these other vendors ought to get a chance to do work here. We have a reputation for, you know, closed door when it comes to new business, and that's changed a little bit.
Reputation of by who? Who said that?
These other architects. I had to, I had to talk to a few of them.
For instance, I'd like to talk to them and see where they were shut out.
Colin Russell.
Colin Russell, I believe they came in second, didn't they, Eileen?
Because we shut the tree and got them to, to submit proposals for this.
No, 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 we just, we just went through these proposals last year, and I believe, I don't want to speak out to, I believe Colin Russell was second, weren't they? Eileen, do you remember? Does anybody remember?
Who was first?
Well, Steve Hammond.
Yeah, Mr. Green remembered to show up with Steve Hammond and Paul. By Mr. Green, I mean the cash, the check donations.
You know what, Dan, and I-
I'd like to give all these, yeah, is there any other, anything we haven't discussed yet, any new ideas on this? So, Dr. Jackson, I, I think at least three of us would like to have an open hearing where we interview the five, and we're obviously going to have to schedule that separately.
Yeah, we'll figure out a date, we'll, you and I are meeting May 1st, so look at the May 5th agenda so we can come up with some dates and times to look at the legal services as well. We don't need a motion, do that as an agenda item.
Is that satisfactory answer?
Yes, fine, that we all five can be there? Is that the practice we're going to stay with? That we'll make sure that all of us will be able to be there on whatever date we pick?
Yeah, I think we should have all five of us there. It's obviously a contentious issue, and-
Actually, I just want to check.
And I think there's a lot for all five of us to learn, so we'll go on to the next item, which is the, should be even more exciting, the grading study team proposal. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have Mrs. Fran Morrison that's going to, she's been leading this group, has been looking at this for a little over a year now, at looking at our graded, weighted grade point average and making some changes to it, so she's going to present. This is just an item for discussion, and the actual information will come in student handbooks and the grading handbook. Go ahead, Fran.
Thank you and good evening. There has been a grading team studying the grading policy, as Dr. Jackson said, for over a year now. The proposal that you have on your agenda represents our work. The team involved administrators, counselors, building leadership team members, parents and students, in an effort to have buy-in from all of our stakeholders. Tonight, I want to discuss the process the team used to generate this recommendation. First, we went out and looked at other school districts in Hamilton and Butler County to gather data on what our sister and partner schools out in the community are doing in terms of grading. We looked at Fairfield, Hamilton, Lakota, Mason, Middletown, Oak Hills, Princeton, Sycamore, Edgewood, Harrison, Mount Health and Ross schools, and their grading policies. Once those grading scales were collected, it was clear that Northwest Local was one of the only districts still using a six-point weighted GPA. The team developed a draft grade scale that aligned with the ranges other districts were using. Next, the team looked at students' GPA calculations using students from last year's top 20 from both high schools and looked at their GPA using the new draft scale to see if there were any significant changes in a student's class rank. An examination of this data collected on students at both high schools showed no adverse impact on a student's class rank using the new proposed grade scale. The scale would have an adjusted weight of five points for an AP course and 4.5 for an honors course, 4 and A. The team then looked at graduation awards for summa, magnum, and cum laude, looking at the points assigned for honors and advanced placement courses. New calculations were developed for each of the graduation awards and then compared with the student data we used to develop the grading scales. Again, using the calculations listed in our recommendations, there was no adverse impact on a student's graduation award using that same data. These new grading scales and the grade, and the graduation award guidelines would be phased in beginning with the current seventh grade students. As part of our process, we also reviewed the guidelines for declaring courses at both high schools to ensure consistency across the district and to include the line where PE requirement is declared for all students. This then completed our process. In summary, the new grading recommendation that you have before you does not apply weight until honors or AP courses are taken. Advanced and general level courses are, remain based on a four-point scale. High school courses taken in the middle school, like foreign language and Algebra I, would receive the four-point advanced scale as of past years. The grading scale now aligns with other districts, so students who transfer into our schools are easily interpreted by the guidance office. This proposal would again be phased in beginning with this year's seventh grade students. Finally, we did our due diligence in reviewing student data to ensure the scale and graduation award was a positive recommendation and did not have a negative impact. This covers the general overview of the proposal that you have before you, and I'll ask, are there any questions?
Fran, how many of the schools that you talked to still employ the valedictorian, salutatorian system?
That was not something that we examined. We looked strictly at the weighted scales.
Did you have a comment on it, Dr. Jackson, or?
On the salutatorian, valedictorian piece? Well, not necessarily common, I know that's come up a few times. I did look at the top 10 for both Corrine High School and Northwest High School, and when you get into those very top students, and the fact that it's very, very competitive, we have GPAs separating our top students literally by the hundredth of points. You could have a, I'm going to make up a number because I'm not sure exactly what it is, but you could have someone that's number one in the class at a 5.87 and number two at a 5.86. I mean, that's how close they are in terms of GPAs. So my guess, I wasn't here when that happened, but about 10 years ago, they went to, went away from the valedictorian, salutatorian, which most schools have done that. We still have a class rank. You know, there's, there's always going to be one through whatever, and they get those ranks, and they often put those on their college applications. It's just during our commencement exercises, we, we recognize those that meet the cum laude designations instead.
It, the thing that concerns me is like when Tegray, our outstanding football player and wrestler, he came in second. I mean, he probably lost by a point from winning first place in the state, but somebody's got to win first. got to win first, and he has that honor of being first. And they don't make the top ten all outstanding or cumulata wrestlers. So, it's just my belief that, it's just a way, the traditions and institutions of the country are gradually going by the wayside. And this was something that was changed back probably in two thousand and two, two thousand and three. And as far as I know, most of the local schools still have, I think Oak Hills does, I can't answer about Mountain Healthy, but it's something I think that needs possible discussion, additional discussion down the road.
Okay. Have we talked to like the counselors, the principals of the schools? Do they like that? You know, do the kids like it?
Well, this, sorry. This is new information, so no. I mean, we have a board meeting with this.
I think we need to get the input from the people that are involved in this on a daily basis. The kids, the counselors, the principals, the assistant principals. Let's see, you know, just because they did away with it ten years ago doesn't mean that it's wrong.
This has been, this grading team has been going on for about a year and a half, and the only point of it was to look at our weighted GPA and see if we need to lower it, more in line with other school districts. We did not look at valedictorian, salutatorian, so we, there's no information regarding that. If that's something the board wants this team to look at, the team can look at that, but...
I think it'd be something for next year. I don't, I think we're too close to graduation now, but is that something we can ask us to have the team look at that?
We can. You know, that's something that has to be, their recommendation that this would change for next year's eighth graders, so it would take four or five years before something like that were to happen. But we can certainly look at, bring back some information regarding that, you know, in terms of what other school districts are doing, and part of the reasoning, and best practices of other districts. Sometimes tradition changes, and my guess would be, the tradition now is with most schools would be to do a, something similar to that with the cumulata, summa cumulata, et cetera.
Andrew, what about having, where we could combine it? Where we have, you know, a child or student who can get that honor of being first and then still maintain the system where you graduate cumulata, magna cumulata, summa cumulata?
I think that what would be best at this point is to put this team back together this summer and next fall to come up with some suggestions like that to see where we would compare to other school districts.
Did anybody have any other comments or questions?
I'm trying to remember, because it has been quite a while, and I could be wrong on this, but it seems to me it was because of input and concerns from the students and the parents and the counselors that they went to this system versus that. I know now our youngest has been out of college a year, so things have changed again, but one thing I was real surprised, even on the college application and stuff, I don't really remember there even being anything on there for valedictorian and salutatorian. I know our nephew graduated valedictorian of his school district, and that didn't get him any more scholarship money or so on and so forth. It was all these other things. That's what got him his scholarship money. So, I would just, I do remember, though, when this was talked about, anytime you tweak stuff like this, you will get people, I mean, we will start hearing from people, because it is something, like Andrew said, that you don't just change it for next year. I mean, you've got to keep them all on a level playing field, and it could take years because they've got to know, because then if it really is going to be within a hundredth of a point, then what are we doing? We're going to have students that want that, so they might not even take a class that really will benefit them more in the future, because maybe this other class would give them a higher percentage or whatever. So, I don't know. It'll be interesting to see what you come up with.
Just grist for the mill. I mean, it's just something to think about and discuss later.
I just wanted to add a couple of things. I thank the committee for looking at this and for taking this matter under consideration. You know, over the years, I did hear offhand comments about six-point grades seeming to be a little bit inflationary, but, so this is a way to recognize the hard work of the students who are getting, you know, who are doing the work for the AP, for the honors, and for that. So, I do, and it does seem to be very much in line, and I wish you well in your next position, Fran.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next item is community communications. If anyone in the audience has a question about something that was discussed this evening, and did you still want to speak first? Please come up and use the microphone.
My name's Jack Toddler, and I just had a question about the auditorium as far as the summer improvement project. Is that off for this summer then, and it's going to be rescheduled for next summer? Or is it off, or what's the status?
No, our hope is we're just going back and making sure that every spec is met, and if not, we'll revisit it, but it is still on for this summer.
So, it's expected to be completed this summer?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
And it'll be on the, it should be on the agenda.
Should be next week.
Next week, we should be voting on that item.
I apologize.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I was just curious about how...
Oh, I love the enthusiasm and spunk when you want to stand up and speak, because they have to run the meeting.
I've been working with the boosters to try to get something done on the auditorium for many years.
And thanks to the boosters. I think they've really done a great job getting that together, by the way, and, you know, when the bids are, just like the grade point averages, when they're that tight, it's good to take a second look at it before we award it.
Well, it's an exciting time. These kids are using technology from nineteen seventy-six, and it's really difficult when they go along to other schools and theater and whatnot to be working on, to be crippled in such a fashion, so. And we know how much it means to both schools' boosters, and it is also my job, along with Andrew's job, just like board members, to make sure we get people to do the job in the correct manner and do it at a high standard. Well, and I appreciate everybody's hard work, so thank you.
Was there anyone else that had a question or comment about anything that was discussed this evening? And I only ask you to come up, because we feed into weigh costs, and that way it picks up the sound from your questions.
Actually, I got two things to comment on. One, what you were just speaking about as far as the valedictorian, salutatorian, is graduations are done differently between both high schools.
Okay. It's two different days. Sometimes it is. A couple of years ago was the same day.
Well, but the graduations are done differently. Actually, I'd say they're more in line this past year, but even a couple of years ago, the graduations were done drastically differently.
They're different.
But they're more in line. Okay, just for example, you have Miss Jermice Northwest at Northwest Graduation. Okay? At Colrain, you have the cumulates up on stage, okay? And when, sorry, Mr. Heeter, when you first brought up, went back to salutatorian, valedictorian, I got a little bit my furrow, because my junior, when my older son graduated in two thousand twelve, when he was at his graduation, when my junior was a freshman, he said, that's going to be me on stage. One of those, oh, teen kids is going to be up there. And I think, you know, his junior class has a lot of smart kids in his class, there's going to be a lot. Well, that's just a hate to have a feeling. And he's going to be one of those that's going to be a percentage point, because he's declaring his classes in, I don't know, it's in straight days, you know, it happened, yeah, but, you know, rightfully so. But you can have a crazy GPA when you graduate, and, you know, what's going to say? Thankfully, it's not going to happen in a year, it's going to change.
We'll sort it out.
Because that was the first thing my wife brought up when we heard about the principal resigning, you know, because I think she has a lot to do with the way that graduation was run, you know, as far as not having valedictorian, salutatorian. And then I, I'm, the other thing I want to talk about is, I feel like I got to say something, but you guys talked for over twenty minutes on the attorneys. Okay, well, in my opinion, it went at least twenty minutes longer than it needed to. Don't get me wrong, not to say any of you didn't have valid points, it's just, the points should have been brought up later in process, okay? From, just for being here tonight, from what I heard tonight, I knew a little bit about this before, and I thought it was taken care of, and it's like, apparently it's still festered. But, I don't know, you get there straight. Okay. I know that you, Mr. Unger wanted to hire an attorney, and then how it went down wasn't necessarily kosher or ethical or what have you, but according to how it was in past years, it didn't need to be bid out, but now you guys are bidding it out, and you have five, six attorneys you're choosing, five attorneys you're choosing?
We bid it out a year ago.
Okay.
And we chose attorneys one year ago.
But that's in the past. Yeah, it is. It's in the past. Okay. But as of tonight, it's now being bid out, and there are five attorneys in the running, correct? And one of the attorneys is still a possible or probable conflict event risk, okay?
I don't look that way.
Whether it is or isn't, but, you know, you guys talked about it tonight, right? There's five in the running, okay? I would think, you know, and Mr. Unger wants, you know, he's keeping it, the choices were tonight to decide whether to go with five or two. And I'm thinking, here, I'm thinking, if you guys try and decide a committee, I was like, it's going to take forever to decide which two. But you said, let's go with all five and keep it public, and I was like, well, it sounds like the way to go. And even though it's never been done before, but because of the way it's been the past couple of months, it sounds like the way to go, all five of you. And all five of you are going to weed through the process of the five attorneys, and if it doesn't take care of the problem itself through that process, game on, you know, let the rivering continue. But why did we talk so long about it tonight? That's all I have to say.
Because it's very important. It's very important to me.
Yes, okay.
As a representative of the community.
I just, yeah, it's just, isn't it going to take care of itself through the process, I would think?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
That's your opinion? That answers my question. Okay, all right. I just was...
I don't think so.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify.
Okay.
I don't have a, my concern isn't the conflict of interest. My concern is that we are even wasting our time, to be perfectly honest, interviewing someone that has no school law experience. That would be like we have an AP math teacher position open at Colrain, and we're interviewing five very good candidates, and the sixth one teaches English.
Right.
So, that is, I think, what if, I'll ask you, what if there were ten? What if there were ten? So, we do an open thing with ten, and we just camp out here for, I mean, we are board elected officials.
Right.
These are the people that we hire. Dr. Jackson and Randy, our treasurer, that is our responsibility.
Right.
We hire the best people we think possible, and then it's up to them. Dr. Jackson's the one who is supposed to hire his HR person, hire his business person, so on and so forth.
Right.
This board is really teetering on micromanaging the process. But again, what I had a problem with is, fast forwarding that we haven't even talked about, is that the last meeting, we discussed to do a process for the architect, and you guys just assume that I want a certain architect. You forget, I worked for an architect for six years. I went up against every one of those firms, competed against them for business. So, I'm not necessarily, there's not one certain architect for whom I'm going, yay, yay, yay. All I'm saying is, we decided a certain process to do, and then sometime between the last meeting and tonight, it's been changed. All I'm saying is, let's do it, talk about it here. Why wasn't it talked about here at the meeting? And then, hey, we want to change this. We don't want to do the committee anymore. We want to do an open session, not, oh, make sure your calendar is clear for Wednesday at six thirty, we're interviewing four firms, so we'll probably be, you know, planning on being here Wednesday from six thirty to whenever. That's my thing. And I'm not going to apologize for questioning anything. That's...
I recommend, you know, before speaking up in the previous meetings, and, you know, that's how that things changed from the previous policy of not bidding something out, and now it is being bid out, where it hadn't been in the past, decided by a previous board, correct?
We are an elected board, and we're responsive to the voters. Thank you for bringing your comments forward to clarify our board policy on selection of an architect for a major construction project, but this isn't a major construction project yet. It's an architect to help us put together a plan for all of our buildings, just like at home, you might have a plan for your house with your, you know, when your roof's going to get replaced, you know, when you're going to put new carpet in, you've got all that in your head. When you have the real estate buildings that we do, we need a formal plan, and we're looking for an architect to develop that plan. For a long, long time, since nineteen ninety-seven, we haven't constructed a new building in this district, and we've argued about it a lot, and I really want to get something built, at least one, something that, you know, to balance what people can afford versus a couple of years ago, the board wanted to replace everything that board did, and, you know, I think we're going to get to the point where we do end up building a building sometime in the next couple of years. We kind of have to, because our buildings are, you know, forty, fifty, sixty years old, depending on what building you're looking at. Our specific policy, though, is when selecting an architect for a major construction project, which we're not at yet, the board shall reduce the list of applicants to three or four. We started with eight. The subcommittee we had, we did reduce it to four. Each remaining architect shall be asked to make a formal presentation before the board. The, I think that the five of us are obviously from five different places, and I think it's probably good to have all five of us have input on such a thing, because if this architect comes up with a master plan, and the five of us, believe it or not, we might come together and decide to build a building, I guess the way that Mrs. Detschel wants it, we'd have to go through the RFP process again, because we didn't follow this policy the first time. As board president, I'm bound by state law, federal law, and the big body of board policies that have been put together by school boards in this district over the last fifty years, and I'm trying to follow these policies the best I can. And so, please come Wednesday night. Are we in this room, Andrew?
Right now, we are, yes. Six thirty in here.
And please come and see what happens. I think at the end of the day, we're going to get somewhere. Did you have a comment, Michael? I thought I saw you move your hand.
I have one. I don't want you to be, I don't want this misunderstood. We have, over the years, and again, this isn't a building project, but any building project, and yes, we haven't built a brand-new building since Monford Heights, but there have been other things that have gone on. We have had architects in here. Elaine and I, as board members, sat through presentations before, so I don't want you to think it's just automatically been given to somebody because it, that's not the case. I mean, it's been...
Thank you for your comments. Or is there anyone else that had a comment or question about anything that's been discussed this evening? Could you, are you able to come to the mic?
I have three girls that are in the school district, kind of new to this whole process because we're military, so we've always been in military schools. But I had a question about, I guess it's more along the lines of this question of the school uniform. How does the process work? I know you said it wouldn't be able to be put in place by August, but you were saying in January. Is that January to make the vote and for everybody to decide that's what you're going to do? Or is that something that January is like where you actually put it in place to start for as soon as it starts working?
I think I'll let Dr. Jackson come in on it. It's my understanding you have to give six months' notice. Is that correct?
Well, you're referring to a state law, but there's, we also have a policy, and we've been talking a lot about policy, so we probably need to focus on our school uniform policy as well. There's actually a policy that dictates the timeline for the board. It has to start at a building level, and I'm trying to find the actual policy. I'm on the policy list right now, and I can answer it specifically for you. Here it is. So, the way it would work is that a school team would bring the proposal by October 1st to the superintendent. So, a team at a school has to decide that's something they want. And then the, it's submitted to the board by October 31st after the superintendent reviews it. The board approves it by December 31st. By January 31st, a notification is mailed to the teacher or to parents, and then a second notification is mailed by June 30th with report cards. So, it's almost a year-long process, but I think what's critical is that it starts at a school. That's what our current policy states, is that a school team comes forward saying, we feel like school uniforms would be better for our school, and this is why. And then there's a process also included in here about getting, it has to have board approval, it has to have specifications about what the uniform would look like, it has to have survey results from parents, and there's several things that has to include. Now, this is board policy, so the board can change their own policy, but that, currently, that's how it's written. If you can leave your contact information, I can get this policy to you so you can review it.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your service to our country. Was there anyone else in the audience that had any questions or comments? Please push the microphone.
First of all, in reference to the uniform, yes, it's probably going to take the change board policy for this to go through different, different than that, because the school, each building is not going to come to you. We're at a level now, you know, you know what my issue is, I just don't see the logic of just having two buildings out of 13 buildings or 12 buildings. I think it's illogical, if it's not unethical, first of all. Now, Mr. Heeder is on the same page with me, but we do know that for this to change, the whole board would have to change the policy, and there is a, there is laws in place that all the board has to do, if they change the policy, is to get the unanimous votes from the board, and they can put every, every building in uniform. That, that's what I, I think, that's what should happen. Or get rid of it. I'm going to tell you right now, just to make sure you're clear on this, I appreciate Mr. Jackson's somewhat disarming everyone, but I got to tell you something. I, I was raised up downtown Cincinnati, and none of you ever heard of a gang called Golden Eagles. It ain't going to be on the, some fancy sheet of state or some Defense Department or a general or someone's in charge of investigations. Gangs start by having a theme, having a spirit, and following through with that spirit. They, they're not going to be some, I appreciate the chief maybe doing some investigation, but all it takes is a group of people to have a theme and a goal, because I was in street gangs, and all we had was a theme and a goal, and then we work it out. That goal could be injuring people, killing people, robbing something, or whatever. And my mom seen fit to move me from that area and move me out to Deer Park to save my life. But I have a knife wound on my leg right now from the gang that wasn't written down under some police chief. It was just like they had a goal, and we fought it out. I'm telling you right now, you take a lax attitude, you think, oh, we're okay, because the chief said there's no real organized gang. All it takes is a couple people to get together, follow out a theme, have a goal, and then you got problems. Now, I don't, I'm not trying to get everybody along, but the fact is, the uniforms do help keep you from, because one of the things that were real big in our gang was getting to wear our colors to school, so you know who was in the other colors, and then you fight against other people's colors. So I'm telling you right now, the uniforms will help eliminate that spirit, because if you don't nip it at the bud, because I worked across the street as a detective from Wilwood High School, and they had that same lax attitude that you guys had back in 1976, '77, when I started being a detective for Elder Berman. They had that same attitude, well, okay, there's, there's no real gangs, because the police chief doesn't know, police doesn't know, and they have gang wars there, and those gangs are still existing today. I'm just saying to you, don't play games with the uniform. If, if truly you believe in it, if you truly believe in the safety of the community, let's just get it done, man. Let's get it done. Or don't do it. But when you start taking body bags out of these schools, don't go, whoa, how did this happen? I'm telling you how it happens, okay? You know, I'm 60 years old. I, I went to some street gangs. I fought for this country for the, in the service and everything. These, if you don't nip these things at the bud, it's like a piece of cancer on a body, and it'll take over. So if you don't attack it now, nip it at the bud, get these kids in uniforms and everything, because the kids are going to belong to something. They can belong to our uniforms, or they can belong to the money gang, or the Golden Eagles, or the Black Knights, or the Bloods. They'll do it. They'll find a way. If you don't give them something, if you don't put them in a football uniform or a singlet or something, they'll find something to belong to. Now, we can pick for them, we can help them, or we can just take that attitude. It's okay. We're going to be all right, because they don't have it written down as an organized gang. And I'm going to tell you, you can get five people together, and we set a goal, and it's a gang. Just letting you know.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Another thing I want to say is, there's a difference of a, of a vendor donating to a levy, to a whole group that's taking a personal donation now. That's true. And you're trying to play me like Dirty Clothes. It's cool, but there's a difference in getting a personal donation than a levy donation. If they donated to levies for science and everything, you know, I've been in this campaign thing for six years. I was pure when I came here. I'm not as pure anymore. So I know there's a difference for a personal donation than a levy donation. So don't play me like Dirty Clothes.
Mr. Carpenter, the, the donation was from the Coast Political Action Committee, which is a registered committee at the Hamilton-
But they donated to your campaign, sir, right? Yes, I know.
Yes, no problem with that. How does that, how does that, how do you tie that to the attorneys, though?
Huh?
I don't see how you tie that to the attorneys.
Well, I look, the Coast group is pretty nasty, by the way, but that's a different subject matter. But the point is, they're connected with, sir. That's all.
That's fine. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to ask a question or make a comment about anything that's been spoken about this evening?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Carpenter, because you, you know, you and I have been going back and forth on the, the uniform thing. It is as simple as changing the policy, and number two, it doesn't require unanimous vote, and number three, I think it has so convoluted the process. But remember, that was the first school, and so it was, we got all, we voted, we had the parents' vote, as I recall, was, a large majority were in favor, and in the interest of, I mean, we just can't get it for September, but I think we could amend things that a good starting point would be the first of the year, but-
When I checked the state, they did say there's going to be a unanimous vote.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to investigate that. Thank you. Was there anyone else that had any comments about this evening? Please go to the microphone.
Dexter's right, there is gangs out there. Years ago, they used to come from California and start their own gangs back here. In my, my work, I, my, my work out there, we have a lot of them out there, and here they actually put signs and put paintings on there. The former police chief told us a story, he's one, he took over for the police there in fact, '86. They actually come out of other states, come here and build gangs up, and they put like your symbols on different buildings and draw pictures and posters on things to get people to join their group. I mean, I don't know what he's talking about, but there is gangs like that who do come in different areas and try to start up something. But we're having here at school, but there is the people come from other countries, other states come and do these gangs. I see that happen.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Gop. Was there anyone else that had any comments about anything that's been discussed this evening? You're hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is board member comments. Mr. Detschel?
No, Dan, I don't have any other comments.
Mr. Harlow?
I just want to take a moment regarding the incident on Thursday. I was on Twitter and social media and seeing what was happening during the day, and I really want to commend the students at Colrain High School especially who fought back and tried to quell the stories that were spinning out of control. I was planning to bring some of them and, and everything, but decided in the interest of time not to do it, and also getting maybe some privacy issues, but we all was out there. It was really good to see some of the students try to speak truth into the face of a situation that was spiraling out of control, and at least on social media, it was spiraling out of control, and they pushed back against some students saying disparaging things about our school, and they, they even pushed back a little bit on some of the reporters, some of the reporters that seemed to be fishing around for, for stories and comments and things. And so that was, that was really, that was really, really something good to see, and we, we do have good students that will defend Colrain High School and defend the district.
Mrs. Detschel?
Michael, to piggyback on that, I know I, we turned on the news right away, and I just want to thank Channel 5. I think Channel 5 did the best coverage. I mean, they, they came, actually, they didn't lead with it, and it was at the very end, but they squelched everything that they're, you know, they'd already talked to administration, there was not a lockdown, there was not a, there was not a gun, there was not a threat, I mean, and they were very matter-of-fact about it. So I, I think Channel 5 probably did the best job as far as reporting, you know, the accuracy of what was going on. Other than that, just thank all of you. I know it's late. Appreciate you all being here, and hope to see you here on Wednesday, is it 6:30?
6:30.
We'll be interviewing architect firms.
Dr. Heeder?
Nothing for me, Dan.
I'd like to thank everyone for, for coming to the meeting and, and Wednesday at 6:30. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is a motion for adjournment.
It's moved second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Did you want to, no, it's looked like you were going to say-
Oh, no, 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 I was, I was thinking.
Motion's, motion's been moved and seconded.
No, I was going to ask you something when this is over.
Randy, please call for the vote.
I was going to say, you know, that's going to be a long wait. You want to make sure they're going to have the water and stuff.
Did you vote?
No.
Our motion carries 5 to 0. This meeting's adjourned.